Oh, go ahead and mute until you're ready to speak, please. Thank you.
We got Doug and everybody. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jim?
Heavenly Father, we thank you for providing the leadership for the city. People that dedicate so much time to make our community better. We also thank you for members of the public who are here showing their interest in the future of the city. Gaius illuminate us, give us the knowledge to make the proper decisions, which is best for citizens and the city of Kimball. In Jesus's name we pray. Yeah.
Amen.
Now I'll call the meeting to order and we will have a roll form. Yep.
Hi.
Here.
Robinsons.
President.
And Morrison.
President.
Okay, we have a forum for the city council meeting. It is five o'clock.
All right, as required by state law, the city of Kimball is available at least one current copy of the open meetings act posted in the meeting room. Agenda items may be moved up or down on the agenda at the discretion of the mayor. Additionally, additions may not be made to this agenda less than 24 hours before the beginning of the meeting, unless they're considered under this section of the agenda and the council determines the matter requires emergency action. So now we will go into the consent agenda items. We have the minutes, the claims, and the financial. They can be handled as a group, but they can be handled individually. Council, have you looked them over and how do you want to do?
The motion that we, uh, the, uh, agenda items is one adoption.
Is there a second? Please vote.
All ayes, most carries.
Thank you. Uh, next item on the agenda is public hearings. We will open of a public hearing, receive public comments regarding requests from Ryan Barron to rezone a parcel of land from R1 medium to high-density residential. From R1 medium to high-density residential, C2 general commercial, following legal description and local addition of block five lots 11A and 12A, 311 East Second Street, parcel ID is 530047136. Public hearing, anybody wants to comment on the being done? Hey, I guess we can close that public hearing. Five oh five is what my box says. And the second public hearing is to receive public comments regarding the conditional use permit to allow for storage units on the C2 general commercial property within the following legal description, which is analogville addition blocks five, 11A and 12A, 311 East Second Street, parcel ID is 530047136. There any public comment for that?
May I have a comment?
Please come up and stand at the podium, give your name.
My name is Carl Salaz. I represent the senior center, also known as the friendship center. We're just concerned about that site simply because of the fact that we're worried about any infringement onto the property. No comment?
Not yet.
Okay, thank you.
Took, took your comment and I will go forward. Any other comments? That hearing will close at 5:06. All right, next item on the agenda. Discuss and approve the recommendation from the planning commission for the application of Ryan Barron, rezone a parcel land from R2 mediums to high-density residential to C2 general commercial with the following legal description. Analogville addition block five lots 11A and 12A, 311 East Third Street, parcel ID is 5300471147136. You have a map in your paperwork? Who's the location? And the fact that he wants to put the storage units. Until we have the result. Council?
These storage units would only be on the side of that block, right? Could not pass over the alley over to the friendships then?
It would have some meet the building code setback regulations and that would all subject to a building inspector's approval with the submitted like, or built in there rather.
What it looks like on here, I just wanted to clarify that it doesn't look like it should pose any property issues with the friendships.
And assuming those are both from GIS, that does have a disclosure that the lot lines are not spatially accurate and it's modeling relative location.
Well, this is the alley, so I'm assuming that it's not going to go west of the alley.
And yeah, and the building inspector, the good permit would catch that part of it. Okay? The other comments from the council? Is there a motion to, uh? No, we don't have to.
Down, down.
Oh, we have to just, do we have to approve? We don't approve period.
No, you'll need to approve the, um, the ordinance and then you can do the CUP once you've done the ordinance.
Okay, so the next option, the next step then will be to approve the ordinance.
Eight forty two.
Ordinance eight forty two. Rezoning analog for all addition blocks five A, 11A, 12A, 311 East. Second Street, Kimball, Nebraska, parcel number 530047136. An ordinance amending the zoning certain parcels from medium to high-density residential, R1 to general commercial C2, providing for the repeal of ordinances in conflict and providing for the effective date of this ordinance and publication impact. We have a motion to approve this ordinance and to waive the three reading.
Be the first one, say tell me to waive the three reading.
Your second?
Second.
Please vote.
Sorry. All ayes, most carries.
Yes. All right, then the next item of business. The agenda is discuss and approve the recommendation from the planning commission for the conditional use permit to allow for storage units on the C2 general commercial property with the following legal description, analogville addition block five lots 11A, 12A, 311 East Second Street parcel Any comment on the board? Oh. Okay, so now.
Does that satisfy your concerns with that? That'll be within regulation of our city ordinance or setback criteria and per the building inspector's criteria?
I represent board and I agree, yeah. Yeah, yeah, we'll make sure that they follow the rules. Okay. So now.
Do you just need a motion to go ahead and approve that CUP?
We already passed the ordinance, yeah.
Correct.
Yep, so now I need a, a motion to approve that CUP. Is there a motion?
I.
Your second? Second. Hey, please vote.
All ayes, most carries.
So the next item on the agenda then is to approve and ratify ordinance eight two rezoning parcel ID 5300471. Oh, no, I'm on the wrong.
You know, request?
Yes, no, we're, we're doing ordinance, uh, approve and ratify ordinance eight forty one.
Yeah.
Parcel ID 530017326 from rural residential to heavy commercial. This is a cleanup ordinance. We did everything we were supposed to do clear back in the summertime. Uh, they have already built the, uh, storage units out there. But we had this at the time, for whatever reason, we did not get the ordinance passed. So we need a motion to pass this ordinance uh, and waive the three reading.
Probably ought to be a soul move then.
One second?
Second.
All ayes, most carries.
Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda is a keynote request from Senator Shrockdare, Weedy Dyer, Maine. Do you want to call, or please?
Good evening, everybody. Um, so we're, as you've probably heard, a non-asset sensory farm that we're building here in Kimball, focusing on really creating a safe nurturing space. We've made a lot of progress over the last year and, uh, we're ready to make it rock and roll. Moo and Bay, I don't know how to best um, do that, but we're really focusing on family, um, connections, being able to really make it more geared for those that have neurodiversity challenges with ADHD, autism. Um, but that was our original intent and it's starting to really expand to more of an audience. Um, we, I just received an email today from a youth program for doing community service for those that need um, help from the county attorney in Cheyenne, Kimball County for 11 to 18-year-olds. So it'll provide a, a good environment for them to work and to earn that community service. Um, I've connected with, uh, ILC out of Scotts Glove Gearing area to help provide um, an area for young, well, for adults with disabilities to be able to feel like they are able and to be able to give back to community and for a good cause. So uh, tonight's request is really to help us move forward a little bit more as we're edging away. Uh, we are combining it with a layered approach of funding, so we're, we've got a big team working on things and so we're excited to share.
Good, good, son. Have you seen, have they're application? They have, uh, applied before back in January, but that, so.
The last time you were in, you had mentioned that you were seeking accreditation or at least, uh, notification from a hospital in Colorado regarding your services. What's the status of that?
Actually, I'm going to be talking to that neurologist on Friday. Um, it's a matter of just, it's not accreditation, but just more of an acknowledgement that they're supporting what we're doing. Um, I am still working with with a doctor out of Scotts Bluff as well, and they're like, oh yes, I meant to do that. That's kind of the criteria or the, the status of those. Um, we are also working, and I talked to George Rowland about this uh, on another program and this will be probably next year, to be very honest, before we can really institute it. Um, it's called a grit program. So it's helping teenagers, young, young kids, like maybe eight to eighteen um, that come from unfortunate circumstances, that would be the best way to put it. Um, to really understand they can have grit and so they can have some resilience and to um, have a safe place to kind of rebuild that, you know, like, hey, I've, I've got some qualities here. I can focus on them. And again, it's all about that family connection. So the Uberry, Uberry, blah, 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 blah. The Upick blueberry field that we're putting in. Uh, we've kind of worked out those kinks and we're looking to add like another 600 plants next spring. Um, and we've got to kind of get that happening so that they can grow and produce, uh, so that families, not just whether you have a disability or a need, but a family can come in and pick blueberries for making a blueberry pie or make some blueberry jam, but just that family time that they can spend together. So although we're doing all of this to help those that might struggle a bit with life or have some challenges that they need to, um, work through. Um, it's also just to help give back to the general public, the community at large. Um, maybe, uh, reinforcement for kids for being good at school or something of along that line.
I see that you're doing a car seat event as well with one of your upcoming events. That's really cool.
Yes, yes.
They offer it through hospitals or some other services that have that in town. Uh, like you mentioned in your post, a lot of those are installed incorrectly. So that's really cool.
Yeah, we're trying to just hit a lot of those areas that we can do a little bit to help make it a little bit better.
Yeah, very cool.
Thank you.
Very much. Does the council want to do?
I make a motion to approve the keynote request for, is there a second?
Absolutely. I think these guys are doing great. I'd like to find a way to better advertise and, um, make this kind of an, an anchor because it's a lot of good stuff. You see it on the front range where we don't, we haven't had that opportunity yet. So ultimately, yes, and I am seconding it, I guess.
Please vote.
All ayes, motion carries.
Item on the agenda is discuss and approve the creative walk crosswalk for ninth at Kingswood, the walking trail, Kimball area. To the walking trail. It's from the Kimball Area Foundation. Somebody want to speak to that? Dean?
Good evening, everyone. I'm here to represent Kimball Area Foundation Fund. You have this wonderful little colored photographs in your pocket that is the crosswalk that we'd like to install from the, um, city of Kimball to the north entrance to the trail, which is uh, parallel to the football field, the high school football field. Um, there, we started this project in 2018. There was talk at that time of putting in a crosswalk. Um, it just sort of went by the wayside and there's been public comment coming up again about needing a crosswalk there, um, with safety concerns. So we, um, are recommending that we can do this painted crosswalk. It would be a community project with half the city. Um, Mark Jeffries, the, um, high school art teacher is going to make the stencils for the project. And then we have our expert crosswalk painters, Jessica and Jamie, um, who have done several of the crosswalks in town that will help walk us through it. Kimball Area Foundation Fund will pick up the tab and we'd like to see this happen ASAP.
You very much. Council?
I think these are a great way to bring a little more color to our town. I would like to move that we proof crosswalk.
Is there a second? Please vote.
All ayes, motion carries.
Thank you. Thanks for, uh, also funding it. Next item on the agenda is an update on the wastewater treatment construction from Doug. Can you hear us?
Good evening. Yeah, can you hear me this time?
Yes, Doug, we've been hearing you.
Working better. Good, good. Um, yeah, should be a fairly short update. Um, I updated the board of public works last week. Um, basically the contractor continues to work their way up the building, um, as of last week when I was out there. Uh, they finished up the walls. They had the roof, uh, concrete in place. I was still framed up. I believe that framing's now been taken down. Um, on top of that, they put up the parapet up at the top of the, of the building. Um, so like I said, uh, the building continues to go up, um, kind of parallel with that. In the meantime, they are also working on manufacturing a lot of the equipment. Um, the border control center has been manufactured now. Um, the blower's been manufactured and will be delivered here soon. Um, and then a lot of the HVAC equipment for the, for the new building has also been manufactured, so. Um, the only item in front of you tonight is a pay application from the contractor. Uh, basically covers the stuff I just, uh, I just mentioned there, uh, the building and then manufacturing some of the other, some of the equipment. And that's all I had, unless there's any other, any other questions from you.
Questions from council?
Was the CMU height issue rectified? And if so, was that increased in the budget or covered by the contractor?
CMU height issue, are you referring to the parapet that was, uh, that was installed a little bit too, too tall?
Yes.
Yes, I ran that by my structural engineer. They're going to have to put some extra rebar in there, uh, which they're going to do, um, and that definitely will not be a, a cost to the city. The, the contractor's going to have to eat that cost.
Thanks, thank you.
So the amount we're talking about tonight is this 207,46128? Is that correct?
Correct, yes.
All right. Are there questions? Are there, is that, is your, uh, motion?
Well, Mike, why should we pay the pay request? But it didn't, but 207?
Four six one two eight.
Four six one two eight.
Second.
Please vote.
All ayes, most carries.
The next item is some good news that you're going to tell us on the sewer intercept improvement project. Is that right, Doug?
Yes, yes, it is. Um, well, I suppose the good news is, uh, we found out that pipe is bigger than we had thought. Um, we had been working off the old maps. Uh, we tried to take a look down there. Everything we had said that pipe was six inch for those two blocks, six inch diameter pipe. Um, two weeks ago now, Johnson Services was in town doing some televising throughout town. Um, and we were going to have them televise that line, um, for the project, try and find the services. And anyway, they got the robot down there and took a look at the pipe and said, that, that's 10 inch. Um, so somehow your old maps are, are out of date. Um, so I guess the, the good news is, yeah, it's, it's 10 inch. Uh, we had the contractor check the south end, the middle of the project and the north end, um, all three blocks there, and it is 10 inch all the way through. Um, so I guess that's, uh, that's where that, that is at.
So we have we approve the payment? So I think we have everything done there. Okay? Thank you, Doug.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is discuss and approve the BPW's recommendation to the council with the mayor's signature on the Kimball SPP transmission facility assignment and credit agreement with mean. Do you want to speak to that, Jim, or?
The bag, yeah.
Where you all carefully read the contract. Me, when I read it, it is kind of like Merry Christmas.
Yeah.
There's a Southwood Power Pool and, and me asking us to agree with them that example, the 115 line between our south substation and the WAPA substation, if there's maintenance or repair, we don't have to foot the whole bill. And so that's basically what it says.
That's what I thought, but I wanted you to tell everybody the good news. So is there a motion to, uh, approve?
Pick a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the document with, uh, mean on the Kimball SPP transmission facilities agreement.
Your second? Please vote.
All ayes, most carries.
Okay. Jim, is there ready for the next one? Discuss and approve the recommendation for the, the board of public works payment the invoice for the NAMC power generation project.
And the project's not totally complete, but it's pretty close. So there, I'm, I think there will be one more invoice to, to complete it. But this one's in the amount of 447,195 dollars and 33 cents. Board of Public Works did recommend approval.
So this is, uh, in anticipation, is this the entire amount? You say we're close, but not quite there. Are we going to see an additional invoice?
Yes, one more.
And that's in.
We don't pay everything until it's done.
Right, okay.
Yeah, they still, they still have to do a, a test, right? Uh, past the test?
Yeah, uh, mean we'll do that. Um, it's my understanding they had a, an issue, the company, the subcontractor is going to run the the lines from diesel tanks over went under. And so they really had to scramble to to get, get that done and that's really slowed things down.
Or a motion to do that?
Uh, some move.
Second?
One second.
Please vote.
All ayes, most carries.
Hey. You don't want to sit down, Dave? Listen. Discuss and approve the recommendation for the board of public works to purchase a new trash truck Floyd's with the combination of reserve funds and a bank loan.
This is something we've been discussing for at least two years. And, uh, we currently have, uh, $235,000 set aside for purchase. One year ago, the bid was 241, I think. Uh, you can see here is 275,500. Um, our budget shows projection of $37,000 for maintenance of the old trucks. We really believe it's time to just pull the trigger because prices are not going to go down, I don't think. And in order to do this, the board of public works really wants to hang on to 25,000 that reserve fund just as a backup. Reserve funds are important. And so we would be asking one of the local financial institutions to loan roughly $75,000, but we really think that it's the most cost-effective way to do it.
We are going to more timely manner than we thought. We thought we'd have to wait at least a year, right?
Yeah, it, it will definitely be in this coming fiscal year.
Do we have any other projected capital expenses, major capital expenses for the trash collection? Right. What, what's our anticipated timeout until the next major capital expense purchase?
For trash?
Anything.
Probably another replacement truck.
And.
We always have the dumpsters. That's just part of.
Almost residual.
Yeah.
The major capital outlet. So when, when's the projected timeframe for that?
Under 10 years.
Under 10 years?
Did we measure this truck? It's going to fit through the door?
It's stronger than, than.
Good.
Why that be important?
I'll tell you that story sometime. Make a motion, we, uh, the board of public works's recommendation to buy a new trash truck from Floyd's.
Is there a second? Second? Please vote.
All ayes, most carries.
Item on the agenda, discuss and approve the recommendation for the board of public works for the two twenty-five, 2025, 26 fiscal year budget for electric, water, wastewater treatment plant, trash collection and, and bill. Okay?
Spend a lot of time looking and seeing what do we absolutely have to have and where can we cut or where can we delay? I'm not going to point out all the details I did at the workshop because I probably don't want to listen to all of that advice anyway. We did settle on the, on electric generation fees from mean, we did settle on 210, uh, a couple of weeks ago, that was at 240. We really think 210 is more reasonable. Um, and then down below, there's 200,000 um, for reimbursement of costs for electrical, for example, if, if the city ends up doing that. The city is willing, continue to do what they have in the past for several places is install the electrical connections. But the actual materials, there's a charge for that. We don't give the materials away. We'll help by furnishing some labor, not the materials. And so that's what that reimbursement is for. Just a reminder, electric rates have to come up and so there will be a resolution before long increasing electric rates. Um, January 1st, 2025, WAPA increased their rates 8.8%. Active April 1st of 2025, main increase theirs, it was 9.23, I think, on, on the usage and over 12% on a, on their fixed cost. January 1st, 2026, WAPA is going to increase rates 8.7%. And it's just nationwide. And it's just nationwide, electric rates are going up. We have no control over that, but we can't, we can't just eat those increases and, and still have the funds available to maintain the system, so. Rate increase is coming. That's all I'm, I'm flesh with unless you have questions. Water's pretty much straightforward. There's reference to a potential one percent increase in rates, but we really haven't had a serious discussion about that yet, so we'll just see how, how that works out. I will say that, uh, Greg has done an excellent job of coming up with a program for routine maintenance, which in the long run will really pay. It's awkward when you have a, a main line that breaks and that valve has not been exercised for years and it won't work. So you're struggling to even shut off the water to the area. Craig is really doing a great job of getting us back to where that won't happen again, so. Routine maintenance phase. So that is now very well managed. Waste water treatment plant, as you know, we have a project and you just proved another payment on that one. Getting fairly close to having a, a good idea, a good handle on what rate increases will be. We're looking at three steps. So each step is not all that big and spread it out over time. So basically working on now is timing of those steps. The first payment of the loan, principal payment, I think is in two thousand twenty-seven, is that correct?
USDA.
Yeah, the USDA loan, I think, it'll be, it'll be annual payments with semi-annual interest. The fact that the interceptor project is not necessary means that loan will be smaller. And so we're playing with different numbers right now on what, what it'll take to pay for that construction.
Well, the money saved from the not needing to do the interceptor project before we convert that loan, are we going to be investing that roughly eight hundred thousand dollars into a CD? Or how will we, we'll be holding that?
Dean currently has that money invested in a CD that's returning a higher interest rate than what we're paying on that, on that construction loan. So we're, yeah, and we'll just leave it there until we close the loan and, and then it goes to pay off the construction loan.
Good to go, Gene. Yeah.
But when we talked about that possibility, I could see the sparkle in her eyes and she went and got it done, so. Let's waste water treatment plant. Trash collections. It doesn't look so pretty, but we have the purchase of a trash truck and Gatsby is different than Fasby, it's government accounting, and so that has to be as a one-time expense. It's not a, it doesn't go into assets and then depreciate out. So that's why that number doesn't look very good, but it's just the accountant. We also have discussed and intend to begin setting aside a few dollars every year so that ten years from now, when we need another one, we're not scrambling for money to be able to cover a trash truck. It's just more efficient to put a small amount aside each year, earn interest on it than it is to have nothing, have to borrow money and pay interest. It's in the best interest of our citizens.
Like to see us not have to take out loans, so I think that that should be a priority moving forward with our budget.
And that was our original plan, but when it jumped from two forty-one to almost two eighty in one year, that kind of gets your attention too.
Are we, uh, still looking to have discussions with Garing after the budget period?
Yeah. And internally, we think that Kimball is location-wise is very logical place for them. So we, we look forward to talking to them and and coming up with something as a win-win for both of us.
We, we wanted to be a win for us, obviously.
Yeah. So, yeah, we look forward to that. But everybody's scrambling on budgets right now.
Yes.
Landfill is our problem, child. And I remember, um, year and a half ago, the auditor said landfills for communities this size are a challenge. So that's not a surprise. Uh, we're currently, we have a contract with the firm to do a rate study, a rate study analysis for us. We're waiting for those results. So there's some uncertainty exactly how that's going to all fall out. And the one thing that really prompted that is we're going to be charging by the ton rather than estimation of cubic yards. And so we have to convert from, from volume to an inch.
And that might affect also your discussions with Garing, right? Potentially?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, our discussions with them will be a, a fee by the ton. Yeah.
When do you expect that study to be available?
Shouldn't be too much longer.
Okay.
And when do we anticipate the scale being completed? Is there, um, a plan in place on the south side of the scale for water erosion to mitigate that? So that does. Thank you. Takes a while for that concrete to cure. Fix up.
One place where we found that we decided to make a cut was Keep Kimball Beautiful. A little history. Two thousand seventeen, we had an agreement and we were giving them twenty-four thousand per year. Plus a building, plus the utilities on the building. And then about three years after that, it went to thirty-six thousand. Couple of years ago, they had a huge increase. But that's also under the previous mayor. That was the Board of Public Works who the auditor showed us that they lost eight hundred and forty-four thousand that year. We're still digging out of a hole. That group, quite frankly, was not very responsible. So we're still digging out of that hole. So the board discussed it and chose to double that twenty-four thousand to forty-eight thousand. And I, and I know that puts a kink in, in their operation. But to go to the public and say, well, we need a rate increase to support Keep Kimball Beautiful would not be a very popular thing to do either. So kind of puts us in a, in a bind, but that, that was our recommendation. And we're still losing over a hundred thousand in that department. That's our budget. Unless you have more questions.
Have you ever considered pursuing, uh, transfer station with the landfill? I know that it's been a subject, but where is that? Why? With the BPW?
That's we, we've looked at it. Our discussions with Garing will be part of our, our discussion, what are we going to do in the future? So.
And then I'm certainly interested in single stream trash collection and recycling. Instead of having two parallel systems, why are we not implementing that and having co-location of services? Thus reducing our liability of an extra building, uh, utilities, insurance.
When I think alike.
So i- is that in, in the works at all, or where are we at in discussions with that in the planning phase or?
It's in the discussions, but it's very prelim, preliminary, so.
How do we get out of preliminary and start really looking at this seriously?
Ahead of time. We, we've had a, a power plant, a wastewater treatment plant that's taken a lot of time and, and we've always said that landfill is next and, yeah. We're, we're starting to discuss those issues, but it's not a one-month process either.
No, no, and I, and I get that. I just, you know, and I do appreciate we've had some huge priorities that have taken up the time. It's, it's, you know, this is an opportunity that could present itself to help us with, you know, because this is a budget that's been a loss leader going forward for quite a while.
I think I will allow on this budget before the council makes a decision to allow, uh, public comment. Public comment is just that, is just a comment. Uh, you have up to three minutes to comment. Comment one person at a time. This is not a debate. Uh, you can't, the audience cannot be talking while the person is commenting. And you only get one shot, shot unless there's an absolute necessary to have you come back. So is there anybody that wants to make a public comment on the Board of Public Works budget?
I do, please.
So probably Keep Kimball Beautiful Director, uh, only three minutes. Uh, we've actually requested this just in the past, uh, to go after some more funding. I've, believe I've only missed one meeting uh, of all the budget stuff, uh, conversations with KKB at the meetings. And grants are due tomorrow, and this is the first time I've heard about this and seen it on paper. We have brought in, in the last ten years, over a million dollars in grants for the city of Kimball. Um, I've kind of just advised the Board of Public Works and stuff, why we actually do that offset cost, um, coming down to, so say possibly the final day for this, when our request was, was our expansion of that to actually produce more. We actually got the funding before, um, for the big increase when it went to that, uh, with prior, uh, officials actually set it on the board. And that big jump when we went was from six hundred and twenty-two thousand pounds to eight hundred and thirty-four, and then the following year was nine hundred and twenty-five thousand pounds, and then we hit nine hundred and eighty-eight thousand pounds last year. So, um, this actually has been a significant portion of what we've worked on, what our goal is for the city of Kimball. And that sixty-seven thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars, um, just for our two part-time personnel and our one full-time personnel. Um, that reverted back to about sixty-two thousand, seven hundred dollars just in the personnel wage add to the city of Kimball. So exchange of services. Uh, we figured that was a pretty good balance. So the money above and beyond that, um, was a plus for the city, I guess, in my mind. The buildings actually serve there. We've actually been in that building, uh, been in service for over forty-three years. Been in that building for thirty-some years. So Austin, I believe when you said something about kind of like a coalition type deal to like work together more, um, uh, th- there is big benefits of this. Um, like I said, I've addressed lots. I, I don't know if there's more conversation that we can actually have with that. Uh, but to cut us almost twenty thousand on a one-day heads-up that I know of, I come to these meetings and most of you guys know that I come here and the Board of Public Works, so got more to discuss if time allows or a, a side meeting, uh, later on, but I appreciate.
Thanks, bud. Anyone else? Counsel?
I had the intention of changing your line item for the recycling center. Line item zero, zero, five, nine, zero, seven, seven, one, the forty-eight thousand approved. I was looking to revert that back to the two thousand seventeen, uh, original agreed amount. With the remainder of that going to a feasibility study for co-location of the trash and recycling, because I think efficiency is important and working together. I do believe that if we are able to co-locate this at the same location, which there are currently four grants available in the state of Nebraska for this specific purpose, we can go from obliga, obligatory recycling to quasi-man, mandatory recycling through the sorting of a hundred percent of the trash that comes in. If we do that, we're decreasing the amount of trash that goes into the landfill and saving our constituents money because, and we're also helping the environment. So it's a win-win. I'm not going to do that at this point just because of the time constraint with the grants and budgets, but I will want everybody in the room to be apprised that this is a high priority for me is looking into this, specifically at becoming a transfer station and looking for co-location of both of these services. I don't think we need a duplication of effort. I think we could combine together and be more efficient and save the taxpayers money. So I, I think that there are some backend issues that need to be resolved with communication, uh, on both sides. We need to address that in a different forum, I believe, but that's something that needs to be handled. There needs to be clear communication flow both ways in all the cities of the department. So I will not be changing that line item today just based on the current grant requirement timeframe, but know that that was my original intention.
Any other comments from counsel?
I would just like to say that I, I think the recycling programs is important. I think it keeps a lot of trash out of our landfill. Budget time is hard, like everybody's got to take some cuts. I hate that the communication is not there. That's got to get fixed. I also hate that we have to take money away, but, uh, I think that we need to make sure that we find ways to continue to support how we can and be efficient so it can continue because it is important. I'm a big user of recycling, so.
Hey, I think Austin brings up some very good points, especially how do we go from a pretty low percentage, well, good for a small town of recycling, but how do we get that up closer to a hundred percent with looking at opportunities down the road? And again, we need to focus, focus right now, and so I can appreciate that. But I think, uh, the more we can go to ultimately that consolidation and looking at how do we get a hundred percent recycling, because basically with, uh, point on, uh, pickup opportunities, then that I think is going to be a big win for everybody. So good, good, good points.
I agree with their points. I just basically want to thank the Board of Public Works for all their, all their hard work. I know this has been a very challenging, uh, time for you guys. And, uh, yeah, job well done. Might not be the most popular job in the world, but you did a good job.
Okay. The only thing I could add is, is obviously there should be a little more communication and, uh, I think we're all trying to work for the same thing. So I don't, I think the, the, the goal isn't, I don't think we're all have, we just want what's best for, for Kimball and we want the best, what's, we need to recycle just as much as we can and it said, I, I use it all for everything that I can. Do we have anybody that wants to make a motion for tonight to approve the recommendation for the budget for the BPW?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, please vote.
All eyes, motion carries.
I definitely need to work on that communication. Having twenty-four hours down the center grant doesn't cut it. So. Yeah, and bring up some good points.
The next item on the agenda, discuss recommendation from the loan advisory committee and council decision regarding the workforce housing infrastructure grant for Clean Harbors Lighthouse subdivision, the installation of utilities or for funding of electric utilities from a source. Excuse me. So the loan advisory committee had a, um, LB eighty-fourty loan advisory committee at a meeting this morning. Uh, there was a request from Clean Harbors to, uh, pay for the material to get a workforce housing grant to pay for the material for the Lighthouse subdivision for the, uh, fourteen lots that are being, uh, constructed right now. Um, there was good discussion. But we felt that it was, there was good discussion and it was something that that the town needs, the town needs the, um, the subdivision, that town needs housing. Uh, there are very many, uh, precedents in, in, in that situation. Uh, we've had some, some projects in Kimball that, uh, we had one project where there is a building in town which wound up receiving two hundred and forty-three thousand dollars in LB eighty-fourty grants. Uh, and it was not, nothing illegal about it, nothing wrong about it. That was just one building and now we're asking for the, yeah, we asked the LB eighty-fourty committee to, uh, give a hundred and ninety-one thousand to, to the Lighthouse subdivision. And what, basically what that amounts to is, and, and the current, And what basically what that amounts to is, and, and the current, the current, um. Balance in that LB eighty forty fund is three hundred and twenty thousand dollars, that's just been sitting there. Uh, that money will not go directly to Clean Harbors, that money then will in turn. Basically go back to Board of Public Works. And so then the Board of Public Works will not have to pay that, the ratepayers will not have to pay for that, so it is, it is not a, uh. It's not a gift to anybody, it's just, in my opinion, it's, it's a gift giving it back to the town. And when the, uh, meeting was over, that, uh, LB eighty forty board unanimously approved their. Request for that grant. Um, and so tonight, uh, it's up to the board to either approve that, go along with the LB eighty forty. Or to, uh, not. Uh, I will allow, again, I will allow, uh, public comment. Uh, if people want to speak. Again, it's three minutes, one person, and it is just comment, it's not, not a debate. Uh, it's just comments so that the council can make their decision. And now, uh, I would though like to give, uh, Paul Whiting, who is from Clean Harbors. The opportunity to speak, he couldn't be here tonight, but he did want to speak to us, so. Paul, do you have anything to say?
Um, probably not anything that we didn't discuss this morning, uh, John, with the loan advisory committee, but. Basically, the, what the company is trying to do is transition from. Trailer housing, which is working out okay, but it's not ideal, and it's not, it doesn't have any permanency to it. So it doesn't add any true value to the town. And we want to transition to this more permanent housing, so. The fourteen lots will actually have twenty-six housing units, because as we mentioned. Four of the lots will have, uh, apartment units or, or I should say, uh. Single units attached, similar to what we built up on Seventh Street. That's turned into a, a very good, uh, attraction for new help. Um, we've got seventy-five trailers or that we've leased out at the Staler, uh, complex. Um, that's working out okay, but we're finding that the. People that we've hired are much happier in the apartments and there's a certainly a demand for housing. And. We, as Clean Harbors, are funding most of that development if, other than the electric, we will be funding the roads, we've got setting the site work, the drainage. The water and sewer lines, um, and the paving. And, you know, as we all know, we had hoped that the state would step up and, and give some grants a couple of years ago, but that didn't happen, and we realized that the town. Uh, the city of Kimball doesn't have excess funds and we don't want to see the taxes go up. Um, I will mention that the new plant we built adds about three million in taxes to the. Um, community in general, but obviously the city of Kimball doesn't enjoy any of that money. So this is a, this is a big thing for Clean Harbors, it doesn't sound like. You know, a big company would need this, but it's actually helping the city. Uh, help us develop that property by putting the electric service in, so. We greatly appreciated the loan advisory committee, uh, agreeing and approving that. That's all I've got, uh, any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Counsel, do you have any questions for Paul?
Hi, Paul, this is Craig Pike. Um. With us supporting you from the electric on the labor to put all, to put the, the electrical in. Are you, uh? Are you looking at, this is a one-time thing for. Our electric department, or are you expected to come back to the party on the other phases? Because personally, I would like to see that this is a one-time only.
Yeah, this, this will develop, Craig, the entire first phase of this development. We want to see where this first phase goes, uh. It's sixteen lots in general, including the lot that we've got to dedicate to a retention pond and the lot that we're going to use for open space. There, the next phase of this project, uh, is to be determined, we've got to see how this first phase goes. Um, and then from there, you know. Would, would like to consider that. We could come up with an alternate way of funding it, but we haven't even thought about the next phase yet, we want to get this first phase under our belt.
And I can, I can appreciate that, um, I just, uh, you know, the. We, the city does not have bottomless resources and, uh. You know, if, if the subsequent, if this phase is success. Um, you know, we're looking at some very serious budget issues, not only this year, but possibly next year and the year following. So I want to, I, I'm concerned that, uh, this support, if we do it, is a one-time thing.
We're not asking for anything other than what we're asking for right now, Craig.
Okay, um, are you, is Clean Harbor is going to be responsible for the side upkeep? After its build, mowing, things like that?
Um, well, mowing would be up to the individual property owners, any open space, Clean Harbors would take care of mowing.
Right, I'm mainly talking about the apartments, I guess.
Oh, the, oh, yeah, the apartments, the same as the apartments we've got downtown, yes, we're responsible for the maintenance.
Okay, and the cost on materials. Um, you know, we're looking at, at, of course, you're, uh. You're going to be taking care of that, and we're going to, you know, with, with the mayor, as, as mentioned. Uh, if the costs go up significantly, are you expecting to pass that on to the city, or is this. Treating this as a fixed price, not a cost plus basis?
Well, we didn't, we didn't prepare the estimate, Craig, uh. The, uh, electric department, uh, prepared the estimate, my understanding of those are all list prices. So I would think that when they do the actual buyout, the number might come in lower than that, given that there's a appreciable markup in electrical supplies, but.
Sure. So I, I. Okay, go ahead, thank you.
Any other questions from the council for Paul? Thank you, Paul, I appreciate that. Anybody from the public want to comment again, three minutes, just state your name.
April Miller, um, so a couple of things with that money is. From this morning, the way I understand it is at the, in thirty-one, that money would roll back over into the general funds if that LB eighty forty money isn't used. As I've been listening, there's a lot of budget issues here already. Um, that could be a huge benefit here in a couple of years if that money was still in there. Um, second thing is from day one, we've been told that. The city will not fund any of the infrastructure out there. And now it's asking to pay for the electrical part of things. Um, the apartments, you, they say they'll maintain them. I ask all of you guys to drive by the apartments that's here now, that they already have up. I don't know if they've been mowed this year. Um, another question is how full are those apartments that they currently have, are they full? Or are they partially empty? Um, I just think that that money would be better spent on. A non-corporation that is worth almost fourteen billion dollars. I went and looked at a building in Kimball. The other day to purchase, the roof's completely shot on it, um, I don't know how they're gonna, the, the ladies and the old folks home. I don't know how they'll pay to fix that, you know, I think. If it's a way to use that LB eighty forty money for stuff like that, I think would be a lot more beneficial to the company, getting Main Street looking a lot better. To make it look a lot more appealing to people driving through, so that's all I have, thank you.
Is there any other comment?
My name is Julie Garrick. Um, I think Clean Harbors is an asset for the area. But, um, as stated, the city of Kimball isn't going to benefit from this. And they said that they didn't receive any state grants, but there is a plethora of money. From the federal government for workforce and migrant housing. How much money have they gotten for that subdivision? Of the twenty-six planned houses there, how many of them have been pre-sold? Currently, as of last week, I didn't check today, because I wasn't planning on speaking. We have forty-eight houses for sale. Houses aren't moving here.
Forty-eight houses for sale are not contingent to this discussion.
Well, I'm just giving a, a picture, sales tax revenue is down, that I heard from the first of the month meeting. Uh, the numbers projected for growth, uh, haven't happened. In the last two years, so I'm kind of concerned, I'm kind of like Gabriel. I think our money could be better served, because there's a lot of questions that. I just don't think have been explored, having it in the city and to, uh, put those funds back in. You know, it's seven thousand, three hundred and sixty-six dollars per. If you break it down to the twenty-six houses, can't that be passed on to the home buyer like, like a normal house? I don't know, I, I just think it's an awful lot, especially with all of the money out there. For workforce and migrant housing, to put it on us, even if we say, oh, well, it's coming back. It's still our electric department, it's still expenditures. You know, in, in the grand thing, it kind of seems okay, but it's not really, I think. We have to cut everywhere and then we're adding more money to it. I don't know, it just, it doesn't add up, there's too many. Questions, you know, if it's not going to benefit the city. Then why do it?
Thank you for your comment. Yeah.
I'm Suterberg. Kimball would not be Kimball without Clean Harbors today. And the amount of money, I'm, I'm going to tell you right now, that you're talking about. And supporting them with funds that are for community development, that's what they were put here for. Is less than they contributed to the capital campaign for the hospital. They have done this town so much good, and it is, they've been amazing company to work with. So on this one, I'm, I'm on your side, I support it.
Any other comments?
Taylor Brown, um. As many of you know, if you've talked to me about this, I thought it was not a very good idea to give them. Any money, however, I will say this. I have thought about how to spin this to make it palatable for people, and I will say from my own personal experiences. I put the sprinklers in over there at their apartment complex. Excess, uh, thirty-five thousand dollars worth of work that I personally would not have had without Clean Harbors, now I can't say. That they will give me that, any of this business out here, I can't promise they'll give any of you guys that business out there, but what I will say. Is that, uh, for an eleven billion dollar company to. You know, I took it personal to trust me with doing that work for them, I greatly appreciated it, it helped me, it helped my family. And I would hope that if you guys end up approving that, that they will continue to support. Um, not only the Kimball community by donating to the hospital and all that, but by using the. Contractors in town to do as much of that work as they can possibly get us to, um. Now. Two hundred and, or a hundred and ninety one thousand dollars for that is a lot of money. However, I will say as the guy who made that estimate for the electricals department. Sixty thousand of that plus is actually not even. Technically a necessity for the subdivision itself, it is for the electric department. To put a line that runs in front of that property there underground, because it is our problem. And it's a problem every winter, and we have to go through it every time. This is a way to take those funds that we would not be able to use for that and bring it around. Um, I was very adamantly against it, however, I thought very long, I've talked to a bunch of people. And, uh, I don't think this is the worst way to spend that money. And, uh, I think. That the money Clean Harbors will return back to this community, just in what they can pay to local contractors, you know. I can only speak for myself, but from the porta potties to the dumpsters of the sprinkler system, you know, that's all sales tax that comes back to Kimball as far as I'm concerned, so. I would hope that they would use local contractors, I can't assume they wouldn't, and, uh, so there you go, thank you.
Thank you, any other comment? Okay. Counsel?
The only concern I have is that the fund this is coming out of is no longer funded. Because of not continuing LB eighty forty, and it's a lot of money, but then. Because it's not a loan, we're not getting back, so it can't continue to rotate as the others have. I think it's important. Clean Harbors is important, I think. Building is important. I just, I'm struggling with it being that big of a percentage of our fund.
The, uh.
The request, and.
The McGinnis building was even a bigger, uh, percentage of, it didn't come back to us here.
Yeah, and I probably have the same concern, had I been sitting up here at that time, so.
And it, and there comes a point, in my opinion, that you have to, uh, this is an investment in the future, and it will, it will come back. Any other comment, any other, it's your emotion?
Yeah, this was a hard one for me, um. Mainly because of everything probably that has been commented on. And, uh, about we're losing this money. And, uh, how, you know. Why should we be funding an eleven billion dollar company? That was a hard one for me, however. These funds are for development and, uh, building in our community, if we don't start. Figuring out how to make this community expand. We will continue not to have a, 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 uh, community that can grow. We've seen this over and over, at least over my tenure living here, the last fifteen years. A lot of things have come through, a lot of things have been rejected. And, uh, the city continues to go downhill, we have properties now. That are being condemned because people have moved out, we have owners out of state, they're not taking care of the properties, I'm a little off track, but I'll get back to it. Um, the city has problems, the city's not investing, I think. Ultimately, these funds are not going to affect our, uh, taxes, they're not going to, but they are available for economic development. At the end of the day, I'm not happy about it. But I can see the benefit of economic development. And in the greater scheme of thing. If this takes off, and we'll know, we'll know over the first year or so with this phase one. Then it was a pretty damn good investment. If not, we could have lost a hell of a lot more. So I, I, uh, I think we have precedence. Over a number of properties that we've supported with, uh. With the program of, uh, supporting the electrical aspect and some of the utilities. That's a hard one to argue against when you have precedence and somebody's coming up and asking for the same. So, um, I do think it's a, it's, it's something that we need to seriously consider from an economic growth standpoint. Um, I've gone from a hard no to. And you'll see my vote, but I've, I've come to the point that we should be doing that, at least to see how it goes.
And, and the key point is this money all comes back to the city anyway.
It does.
And as. Taylor said, we're also upgrading a line, so. We couldn't do otherwise. Have a motion?
I will, I'll just comment real first, real quick, it, it was a no-brainer for me. I didn't have to think about it twice, I think it's a fabulous investment in ourselves. Investing in ourselves and the money is coming back, you can argue however. You can argue however you want, but in rates and in taxes and in additional shopping that the people that live in those homes do in town and all that, that money is coming back to the community. And there's a lot of LB840 stuff out there that you can't say that about. Even though it's development, I mean, roofs and stuff like that aren't really helping the community. It's helping bad business, which is fine. I'm perfectly fine with that. But this is truly helping the community. And like I said, the funds will come back. Maybe coming back in pieces and chunks and, and stuff here, but I, it's a, it's a, it was a no-brainer for me from, from day one, so.
The growth doesn't start quickly. Starts slowly and continues to have momentum. Then we, yeah, the fact that we've been stagnating, that hurts our economy. It's hard to, it's hard to pull out, but you do it one step at a time. I think, I think this is one of those first steps.
After speaking with a lot of constituents and I do owe one constituent an apology for not making it happen to get to talk with them. It's very hard to assess the value of a bird in the hand versus the value of two birds in the bush. This was a very difficult one that I was torn about. Just asking for the public's trust in our decision, understanding if it's successful, that's great for us. And if it's not successful, then I'll take that one on the chin and be the first one to stand up with the way I vote and admit that.
Like Christ.
So I know it's a very sensitive subject and emotionally charged one. We've been elected to represent our community in the way that we feel is best fit and it's going to do the best, most good for the most amount of people possible. So please just bear with us.
And that motion?
John, could I say something quick?
Yeah.
I'm Don Lonsdale, Action Resources. I worked for Clean Harbor since day one. I went from feeding five families to 14 now. I went from five trucks to 14 trucks. And they work with me great. I think there's bigger and better things for me. Right about the taxes, my value on my property in the county, $95,000. And I don't mind paying the taxes if they're used for something good for the community. That's all right. Get it straight.
Thank you very much.
Counsel?
Can I say something?
Yeah.
Rich Flores, Kimball, Nebraska. I've watched this company for a long time. I've lived here over 70 years. And we've never had a greater supporter, supporter of Kimball than Clean Harbors has been. Clean Harbors is our Cabela's. I think that supporting it in this fashion, they went from 180 employees recently to closing in on 500 employees. Some of these people are living out of town because they can't get to work, they can't find a place to live here adequate to live here. They're making an effort to improve that situation. Sooner or later, the, these outliving employees will want to live here. That increases our economic stance and position greatly. I know a lot of these guys that, that are at Clean Harbors, they're stand-up people. They're doing the right thing. They're not doing this just for Clean Harbors. They're doing this for Kimball, Nebraska. They could have taken this plant somewhere else, this expansion somewhere else. They did not. They came to Kimball, Nebraska. And I thank them for that and I, I wholeheartedly support what they do here.
You're rich. Second, I wholeheartedly concur with what you said. Can I get a motion?
Make a motion. We approve the recommendation of loan advisory committee for the workforce infrastructure grant for Clean Harbors in the amount of $191,515. The only stipulation I'll add is pending final plat approval.
Your second?
Second.
Okay, please vote.
All eyes. Motion carries.
Thank you, counsel, as we all have said. It's differing opinions, but we all feel we're trying to do the right thing for the community. And I appreciate that. The next item on the agenda is discuss and consider options for the economic development budget and remaining funds. I think that's actually yeah, it's third of what came from the back. I guess before we start, my, my vision for this is that we create a economic development department separate from the city. And I'm not, this isn't my original idea. I want to copy basically what Heath County does, which is very, very successful. And we are also like to work with the county. And the county has, we have to get together with the county to do that. So I guess basically what I, what I recommend is that when we do the budget for the economic development, that we basically earmark at least part of the funds that we still have in LB840 to help set up that department. And otherwise not do a whole lot until we can get together and it looks like it's going to be September, Rich, before we can do that. So I really, and the other, the other caveat to that whole thing and to answer to you is I will make sure that we will put the LB840 back on the ballot on the general election in 2026. We had to wait a certain period of time before we could do that. I would rather have it on the general election than on the primary election. And so that's kind of where I want to be with the economic development. Any comments or ideas from?
No, I think that's good.
What, what's the county utilizing our grant for $18,000 for? It says it's listed for the visitors committee, but the visitor center has been closed down.
Correct. There's still a visitor city committee because they, they have to continue to, you have to have a committee to get the lodging funds.
Right.
So, but other than that, I don't know exactly what the county is using that. Do you want to speak to that, Rich?
We continue to be paying that.
I'd rather not this time until we have a joint meeting.
Okay. We can, we can, we're not passing the budget tonight.
I understand. I was just wanting to bring it up.
So we can address that, address that issue. Yeah, I appreciate it.
I, I think he brings up a good point. We should, we should make sure that that's part of our discussion because if, if we're spending for something that's no longer in operation, then that's a problem.
The visitors committee is busy. They're currently, they're currently working.
Yeah, I understand this is not for tonight, but.
All right. All right. Next item on the agenda is discuss and approve the airport authority resolution setting property tax request for fiscal 2025. And either Annette or Matt, can you kind of explain what we're, we're going to approve this, but we don't want to approve the shortage? So, Nat, do you want to speak to that?
Yes, I can speak to that. Can you hear me?
Yes, very well.
Great. So this is the airport authority's tax, property tax request. It has been approved by their board, the airport authority board, as well as the, at the auditor's suggestion. The negative number that everybody sees there, just so everybody understands, that will not come out of the general fund. The airport authority does have their own funds. It is a city property, but the authority has their own taxing authority. So that negative number at the end of the year, should it exist, will come out of the airport authority's cash reserves and that is something for them to manage and discuss amongst the board.
Any questions from the council?
Not so much a question as I'd like to ask that we consider going forward that the airport authorities start participating at least once every month or so. As we'd like have the administrators discussion, we have the police chief. Well, the airport authority, this negative number did not be this negative. And there's, but we need to have at least an understanding. If we're expected to approve this budget and to discuss it, then I'd like to have that discussion at least on a periodic basis where our leader of the airport authority, let's come in and keep us updated. So we can ask the questions so that we understand and maybe we can get some resources to help out. You know, this is not just a person. This is an airport authority and this is part of our city. And it needs to have support. Now, you know, we kind of go off and yeah, well, that's, that's, that's their job. It's not ours. Well, it's the city's and I think there are opportunities that we could have given more support. And I'll guarantee you, I know the people within the city that have helped out with some of the issues that we had with new equipment and otherwise, they, they worked their tails off to make it happen and they did a great job. We just have follow-on opportunities that I think we need to take advantage of and that if we have that discussion at least every other month at one of our meetings, that could be a positive for us. So I'd, I'd like to exiting this, that we have something going forward where we have that opportunity to ask questions and for them to ask questions of us. It's a two-way street.
Good. Good idea.
I'd like to say something there, profitable. Echoing Craig's statements, I, there's a concerning light item, light item on here to me. And that's a downward trend of fuel and oil. And if you look back over the past fiscal years, I believe that there's an issue with the fuel pumps and the pay system. And that's something that we desperately need to get rectified because that's money coming back into the community through the air force and the army. And so I think that that should be included in this, that we have some sort of resolution to the issues causing the lack of fuel cells at the airport. If you look at that, it's affecting our P and L. That's a pretty significant drop in numbers. So I'd like to see a resolution to that and it's a very, very different picture.
Agreed. We have a motion to approve resolution 2020 501, setting the property tax request for the fiscal year 2526. Your second?
Second. Second, as long as, well, nevermind.
All eyes. Motion carries.
To see what, what we've talked about added to that.
Oh, I mean, it
Yeah, I understand.
Strong encouragement that happens very quickly.
Discuss and the next item on the agenda, discuss and consider setting the date for a special council meeting to review the final budget after evaluations are received on 8/21. So we're looking at potential meeting the week of 8/25 to 8/26, 29th or to our next scheduled meeting, which is on night two. And our next rapid, the deadline is actually 9/15, correct? Or 9/7, 9/17?
We lost her.
Oh, she's muted.
I'm here. I believe, I believe it's 9/16. It'll be our second September meeting where we approve the final budget.
Yeah, we, okay.
The sooner we do it, the better.
We, we're going to need at least another working meeting to, about the police and fire, besides all the other budgets.
Yes, we don't receive our evaluations from the county cesser till the 21st and that's what funds the police and fire, so we will have to have a follow-up meeting for that.
I'm available any day next week.
Likewise.
The 29th in the morning would be ideal. I don't know.
We caveat that. I'm available any day next week after 4:30.
I'll sign up for what she said.
I'm not.
So is there a, a potential date that somebody wants to choose?
26. 28?
Because there are no other city meetings on the 26th, are there?
Don't think so.
That's all. That's from my count.
Fucking wreck, fucking wreck, it's terrible.
Okay, that was a new one.
Yeah, next, but that meeting shouldn't be that long.
I don't think so.
We're not, yeah. We'd start at five o'clock on the 26th. And then like I said, we'll have the evaluations and everything. Next item on the agenda, discuss and consider dates for the city-county joint meeting to discuss economic development. Those potential dates are 9/2 and 9/16. From my personal standpoint, it should be nice to do it on 9/2 before our our regular meeting like we've done in the past, probably at four o'clock.
Bring it up.
Yeah.
You can also, okay.
So, so is that fine with everybody that we do it at four o'clock on?
Jamie, are you okay with that?
Yep.
I think I have a, the afternoon appointment in Cheyenne, so on the second, but I won't be able to make that one, but, or I'll be here in time for the regular city council meeting, but I'm not sure it can be early.
You can have a quorum and you can tell everybody.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay. All right. So we're aiming for 9/2.
I would adjust that to 9/16 because I don't know that I'm going to be available on 9/2.
Oh, okay.
Apologies.
I can try to alter my appointment tomorrow before we second. I can call in the morning and try to.
So you won't be for the regular meetings?
Correct.
Okay, so, okay. Well, let's, let's aim for two first and then that's a fair, a good 60.
Yeah.
All right. That is all of the agenda. Ready for reports? Our report again is not real long, other than what I would like to say. As exhibited by tonight's agenda, there is a lot going on in Kimball. Budget time, there is extra time being put in staff and the council and the port of public works. I believe that we are on the right track to help Kimball grow. Only with growth will we be able to lower our levies and our fees. We continue to keep our budgets tight. There is much more that can be done, that needs to be done, especially on the street department and the pool departments. But if, only if there are more people that move into Kimball, spending more money and paying more sales tax. Also with more people, there should be more incentive for additional businesses to come to town, which again will collect more sales tax. Finally, I'd like to say that I, I thank the council. I thank the LB840 committee for having the foresight to understand that we needed to pass that and grant, which again is coming right back to the city. And I think that's going to be the, the kickstart for the, the growth in this town. And I'm looking really forward to that. So Annette, did you, are you up to it or should we bypass your report tonight?
I do have a really quick update I can give everybody. As Jim mentioned earlier, power plant has had a slight holdup with the fuel line contractor. As of today, they, they plan on having that back on track by next week. So hopefully we're just about two weeks out from some final, final decisions here on the plant moving forward. Regarding the rate study for landfill, I actually received that in my email this afternoon. So I'll be forwarding that on to the BPW and we will be looking at that. So that is good timing. We can, if we have to adjust anything before final budget, we can do that. So landfill study is in, we will check into that. Completion of the city park playground should happen over the next couple of weeks with some coordinating with some of the contractors on board with that. We chose to, the park was quite busy this summer with kids, so we chose to wait until after school, went back in to make it so that it wasn't so inconvenient. There will be a slight inconvenience while concrete cures and the tile gets installed. So we're moving forward on that. And a final note, I would just like to say thank you to the Enties and Positive Spaces as well as Kimball Area Foundation. For the new water fountain, it's a really great one with a bottle filler, multiple stations, even an ADA accessible roll-up and a dog station. So that is going to be installed this week by our staff with a, at Gotti Park. It'll be between the playground and the bathrooms with a second plan. With a second plan, again, supported by. Um Kimball Area Foundation and Positive Spaces for a second one. Of a similar type coming to City Park. And that is all I have.
Well, thank you enough. Finally, I have a report from the chief. Uh unfortunately, he had some stuff come up tonight on a personal level that he needed to take care of. And I told him that if he would give me the report, I would gladly read. But that's what I'm going to do. So the chief's report for the month of July, the Kimball Police Department responded to two hundred and eighty eight calls. As of today, the agency has responded to eighty five calls for the month of August. Currently, there are forty one abatements, five in progress and thirty six completed. Some of the calls have included parking complaints, animal calls, alarms, funeral escorts, noise complaints, civil standbys. Disturbance calls, deceased person calls, domestics, thefts, burglary, assault, shoplifting calls. Traffic stops, traffic complaints, ID theft, fraud, DUIs, narcotic calls, a suspicious person. And suspicious vehicles. The larger calls have included multiple arrests for DUI. Other arrests have included narcotics possession and driving under suspension or revocation. The police department has assisted with the execution of several search warrants. The police department also has requested arrest warrants on two individuals who were involved in an assault. Another assault warrant has been requested for an individual on a theft case. Arrest was made on a subject of two counts of sexual assault in the first degree. When the subject was located, a high risk stop was conducted. The sub- subject was taken to custody safely and without incident. Update on hiring, we have an officer heading to the academy next month. Another lateral applicant is currently going through the background investigation portion of the process. Other information, officers with the police department have participated in several trainings. First was the TMS, which is traffic incident management with with the fair coming to town, all class reunion, increased traffic flow was inevitable. The training was designed to improve our response and coordination during real life traffic incidents. The Kimball Police Department was approved for a five thousand dollar grant from the Nebraska Office of Highway Safety. The grant was for speeding, high visi- high visibility enforcement campaign across the state. The campaign ran from July fourteenth to July thirty first. Two thousand twenty five, officers worked their regular shifts and worked overtime for the grant. During the campaign, officers from the agency made thirty five traffic stops, resulting in twenty seven traffic citations for speed. The Kimball Police Department hosted a TASER instructor instructor course through Axon. The or the officers from officers from multiple agencies from several different states attended the two day course. This intensive training included not only in person training, additional coursework needed to complete, to be completed prior to attending the course. We are honored to help supportive, to help support law enforcement in the region and ensure that the officers are equipped with the knowledge and skills. Need to effectively protect their communities. Joint training exercise was recently done with the Kimball Transit Service. TSA and Homeland Security recommended these types of trainings to strengthen community safety. This event took extensive planning and cooperation with other agencies. Corber- corber- cooperation. Like this ensures. A real emergency, should a real emergency occur, agencies will be better prepared for the event. I wanted to thank the Kimball County Sheriff's Department. The Kimball County uh Transit and the City of Kimball. I also like to give a special thanks to K I M B for the spread, to help spread the word that the event was a training exercise. I'd also like to thank the Laramie County Sheriff's Office for for providing role players for the scenarios. We are also looking to host several trainings in twenty twenty six. The courses will include less these, less lethal. Munitions, drug interdiction and crisis intervention intervention. I will update more as the trainings are confirmed. And this is the chief's report. The next item on the agenda is the other business. Uh we are having an executive board meeting for the park and rec budget approval. And it's scheduled right now for tomorrow, August twentieth at four thirty PM at the Kimball County Transit Center. Okay. We're down to the public comment section. Can come up and make comments at the uh podium, state your name. These are for public or for information only and are not subject to discussion from the council. Is there anybody that wants to do that?
John, could I uh make a comment?
Sure.
I uh I want to express our appreciation and behalf of Clean Harvest for the support from uh. The loan advisory committee and the council and for all thoughtful comments from uh the public at the meeting. I think we're gonna break ground on four units yet this year, and I look forward to working with the council on getting the final plat approved. So again, thanks for all your support.
Do you? All right. I have a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Oh, hi.
Adjourns, thanks to the public. Thanks to the public for showing up. We appreciate.